So, one of the things that we're looking to see before you is the same building in the same place, same side, same back channel, but they had a covered walkway. With some slight reconfiguration of the parking area to address the covered walk, the covered entry. And then the good news is that we actually, with this layout or scenario, is that we actually pick up two additional parking, two additional handicap parking spaces. But again, same building, same elevation that we saw last time, it just had the covered walkway. And if you look, the first sheet is what we approved or what we reinstated as the place, and then the place was approved. And then the second sheet just basically shows the covered walkway that'll go over the driveway in the park room. And we have two different plantings on both sides. And we need, going to a TAC committee meeting, but they thought it would be best to, this really wasn't under the jurisdiction of the TAC per se, so we came back to the board to discuss this minor maybe.
Austin, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay. What members?
So, the purpose of the covered walkway is?
So, tenants, when they come to this facility is that they can get out without, you know, getting suggestions to the other places.
And the car, so the cars will be able to pull right now?
Yeah, pull it out.
Take them out and ambulance?
Drop you off, ambulance.
Is that where the ambulance was?
Same there, everybody's doing that. There's a side entrance too that could be used, but that's gonna be, the requirement is that the main entrance has to be covered. So, the nice thing is, and it's a generous cover, I mean, it's over the entire aisle. You know, we'll also pick up, you know, some of the individuals that'll address the handicap parking spaces so they can unload there as well and get that covered.
What members made comments?
Same materials, I'm assuming?
Yeah. So, yeah, the same roofing materials, same, you know, the columns will be addressed, same material.
Am I looking at this correctly, you're losing the parking spaces right in front of the building?
Yeah.
No, actually, what we're losing, what we're actually, what we're actually doing is we're losing those.
So, you're losing the parking spaces in front of the building?
Well, right, we're losing, we're going back to, this is the original.
You're losing the parking spaces in front of the building?
Right, they're going down here now.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you're losing sixteen of twenty.
Yeah. Okay. Because now, this overhang, this covered part, goes out to this parking area. Is that correct?
If you look, yeah.
It doesn't show.
Well, this aisle right now, it was the originally approved aisle on the originally approved site. When we came back to enlarge the building, what we did is this was a double, this aisle was double, double stack, pardon, parking, parking. We eliminated this.
I also think it's more important to mark where it's there.
This used to actually be the aisle.
Okay. So, this is where, this is where it's gonna be?
We're going back to the original aisle location. So, they actually get shifted back.
Okay, of course.
So, when I was standing there to ask, answer your question, I was trying to consider the.
And everything is handicap going in the building?
Handicap is definitely yes.
Any other questions, board members?
I actually think it's an improvement. It makes it more functional and user friendly, you know.
Michael?
When you reapproved this or revised the approval in February, you had four conditions. One is a requirement that the plans were not to be signed until two additional handicap spaces were shown on the plan. The other, an anticipated completion date is at that time, February 21st, 2015. I don't know if that needs to be changed. The submission of a performance standards affidavit and a notation that the project must be started within one year. I assume all of those conditions continue, or is the handicap parking space already done?
Handicap parking spaces are already done, but the other three are still there, we just didn't do them until.
Okay. And they anticipated them?
Yes, I took a little side, okay. Anticipated completion date of February 21st, 2015 is still good?
Okay.
All right, with that, we can, I'll prepare the resolution based upon those four conditions. Those three now.
We have a motion to approve this minor addition.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second? Paul is in favor.
Aye.
Why?
Thank you very much.
Don't wonder, Stephen.
Why not? Just reload it.
Next on the agenda is High Point Estates, East Third Road.
Steve Esposito, representing High Point Estates, and also one of the principals is here tonight, Mr. Dunleavy. What a pleasure.
It is a pleasure.
We were before the board a few months back, and it's a residential subdivision in the RR zone, and the site is located at top of North Church Street, across Winston Circle, Winston Drive. So, if you go from our church street, it's on.
It's on the left hand side.
It's where the old Goshen Hotel was. And we, one of the concerns of the board was, you know, and this, what I'm gonna hand out to you right now are four alternative layouts. The first sheet is the first alternative that you saw before, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that, that could describe some of those. This is actually gonna.
Four choices?
Yeah, well, they're not really all choices, but they are all alternatives. And yes, answers your question.
If not a choice, then it's an alternative?
Well, there are choices. There's always choices.
All right, have you reviewed any of these?
I looked at them, and I'm just checking number four out. Number four is a new one, I looked at the first three, and we talked about the fourth one.
You could bring in even closer, I think, right?
Yeah.
Public hearing or anything.
Whoa. That could've been disastrous. All right. Okay, the first, this is the first alternative that you looked at this fall. Here's North Church Street. This is Winston Court or Winston Circle.
Right.
Right?
Right.
I was getting the derm on it. This particular land has 23 individual lots. All of these, all of these lots were accessed off of the proposed internal road. And again, just in terms of, you know, planning, what you wanna do is when you propose intersection, you know, where there's existing, an existing intersection, you really would like to make those P intersections as possible. So, the layout, you know, in terms of, and again, just, and you'll see these on every one of these, the shades that you're looking at, the lighter gray are slopes in excess of 15 percent slope, which is, you're getting to a moderate slope there. When you look at the darker ones, those are in excess of 25 percent slope, those are pretty steep, pretty much unbelievable. So, what, this, the road anyway, layout, with the exception of this spot right here, pretty much avoids, this little spot right here, avoids, for the most part, those areas of steep slope. So, it makes a little sense, you know, the layout, the geometry. When we did, when we went out, when the surveyors went out, and again, one of the concerns of this board was site loss. And one of the, the surveyors went out, they measured the site distance, and at these two locations, the northerly intersection looking north, and the southerly intersection looking south, were really below what we would call the margin of. We looked at potentially doing some lane clearing, some off-site improvements to enhance the site distance. We then met Art and John Queen from Land and Tully, Joe Fow, Peter Zach and Fow, myself, looked at, and we concluded that although it makes plenty of sense to get the intersection disunfortunately, and the road, the existing road geometry, because on this one, there's actually, right between these two houses, there's a whole hot wood of a high point right here, which really limits your vision south. And of course, this goes down and bends around, so, you know, there's a vertical curve in that road as well that really limits your site distance from that location. You could do some clearing, you could enhance the site distances, but you wanna get up over 300 linear feet of distance for a 30 mile an hour road, and we felt that you probably couldn't even do that with your layout. But, you know, but we didn't, you know, we left it as an alternative. And this is sort of the pros and cons of this particular one. In-site, R I, I should say onsite, the idea worked well, but when we looked at site distances coming in here, they really, they weren't at the greatest locations. So, when we were in the field. You know, I heard.
It was inevitable.
Inevitable. Sorry, oop, back. Jim, you wanna borrow this one, bud?
Yeah.
That is still too much like a bike.
That boogie trap.
So, when we were at the field, collectively, we just walked up and down the road, and we said, okay, this is alternative number two. And if you look at alternative number two, we still have two means of access in and out of the site. The number of lots has gone down a little bit, it's 21 lots. It has two main, it has two access points, the northerly access point and the southerly access point. We looked at those locations in the field, let me just back up a step. So, after we had our initial meeting, this Mike Tully and project team, we looked, we identified certain areas of the site that appeared to have good site distance, site distance is along North Church Street. One of the areas that had decent site distance was this area right here. This is actually the high point, there's a little bit of a ridge right here. So, coming out on that high point gives you very good visibility looking to the north, and it gives you marginal visibility to the south, but there are some areas that we identified that could, there's a big stump actually across, let me just look this up, across the road right here on this corner, if that was removed and some vegetation removed, you could really enhance the site distance.
Is that on the applicants' property?
It's in the, it's within the right way of North Church Street.
Oh, so the village house?
The village house.
Thank you.
We think, we think at this point in time, but at least, at this point in time, looking at the alternatives, we think that that, let's just, we assumed for a moment, if you look at the other, you know, we looked at some of the other propping lines, it appears that that's within the right way of the road. So, we can enhance the site distance. Along this curve, right in this area, the site distance is very good, you can look, you know, in both, in the southerly direction and the northerly direction, well over the minimum of 325 feet. So, we've identified this as a pretty good spot as well. So, again, this is, this is alternative number two. We have two, it's 21 lots, all of the proposed lots access the internal roads, similar to the alternative number one, there are no driveways onto North Church Street.
What about this one?
This piece right here?
Yeah.
I'll go to that. Or this whole thing?
Well, he's showing you. This line right here.
Oh, that lot right there, that's gonna be stormwater. Two of the areas that we've identified that will likely be needed for stormwater is this white spot right in here, it's flat, we'd be able to loosen, structure the base in and there. And then probably somewhere down in this corner of the site as well for stormwater. There's a, the high point is right about here, there's that two bases, this, basically, this is the, this lot goes this way, this lot goes this way, there's a break in here, this goes this way, and then this part of the site goes that way, and then out that. So, basically, this is, this is the break line. So, to get this part of the site, we figured we'd be using this stormwater, and in this corner, to get the rest of the improvements. And again, just the, just the lining space, you know, for those facilities, you know, will need to be there, we don't know what they are yet, but they do need to be there. So, in this, this alternative, there's, on the northerly entrance, there's adequate site distance in both directions, both north and south, without any off-site improvements or onsite improvements. This is the location that we've identified in the field, this is the high point, from North Church Street. We also like this because in between houses, it's not, exactly, of course, it's an existing residence, between the residence. And again, we're looking south, with some off-site improvements, that site distance gets enhanced to, you could, so by adequate site distance.
Remove my off-site improvements?
Oh, that's the stump.
A stump, yeah.
I can't, I was saying, take a stump, okay.
Stump, have to cut and brush it down and use a small band.
And there's an upside, this is on the third part. Art, did you look at this?
Yeah, it's, it would have to involve significant grading and clearing on that bend, though, you know, that bend over right here. We don't know, we didn't go into it in any great detail to see how much would have to be cleared, but across the street on that bend, there would have to be the stump removed and some grading pushed back so that you could see around.
Yeah, but right now, it's.
Right.
Should be done now anyway.
Right.
Whether or without.
It's a building, responsibility.
Right, but again, you know, it will ultimately, you know, be part of, I'm sure, our mitigation, traffic mitigation is part of this project. But again, we've identified, we think, you know, at least at the, at the early stages, it was, it could be achieved.
Michael, do you have the summary in front of you?
Yes.
What on, alternative one and two, it's the third item, as of right plan, what does that mean?
You mean no variance?
Well, right now, when we refer to an as of right plan, there's, there's, an as of right, one and two are as of right plan, there's, that's like here. Then you have what we would call not an as of right plan, may require waivers by the plan, where there's certain things, subdivision law, that you can, there's certain things that you have the ability to waive. And then the third thing would be is if you can't, if it's not something that's waivable under the subdivision regulations and really in the zoning code, then we would have to go to the zoning board of the field for variance. So, when I say one and two are as of right, we didn't identify any need for any waivers by the planning board or any variances by the zoning board of the field.
And is the only waiver you're requesting for the other two, the cul-de-sac line?
Yes. So, just like, length?
Length.
Length, oh, okay. So, I wanna go to.
So, after the stump, is that in this spot where there's sort of a road now, that you can enter the property?
No, it's right, you see this corner right here?
I think, I think it is, it's opposite the driveway, existing door.
Yeah, there's the driveway of the homeowner here, and then.
Show this, show the driveway.
You have like.
Yeah, you see where the drive, you know where the drive goes into the, into the hotel?
Yeah.
And then, right, it's like, if you were just to draw a line right there, it's right in that area there.
Okay. It's, but it's, it's on.
If you're going, if you're coming.
The darker side of the street.
It's actually on the opposite side. If you're going.
Stump is, oh, the stump is on the opposite side.
Yeah, you go this side right here.
Okay, I getcha.
So, if you're going out of the.
Between, that's more of a high level, and the house inside corner of Hilltop.
It's like, when you're, it's like when you're sitting on Hilltop Drive, and you're getting ready to pull out, and you look right.
Yeah.
And you see that big stump right there that should be removed? That's what we're talking about.
That's when you're trying to walk down the street, and you could get clipped by a car.
So, anyway, that, and that's, we think that if, you know, that's a definite off-site improvement that would have to be done to really be, to mitigate the site distance. So.
As you say, it's on the village, village right away. It's pretty close to the streets, so probably.
It's, yeah, it's right up the street.
The road narrows a little bit there, and there's gotta be some more rent away, right?
Right. And in all, and those lots were all created, you know, fairly recent, you know, they're not old lots that, so mostly newly created lots, you know, have a.
Right away.
Have established where you could put weight. I mean, and some people, you know, will reconsider, obviously, as part of the plans that you presented for the board. Alternative number three. Alternative number three is a head-up, it's a cul-de-sac, and it has one access into the site. The site, we're utilizing the southerly most location, you know, that we identified as having reasonable site distance. All, there's, in this total of 19 lots in this layout, 17 of them access off of the proposed cul-de-sac. And again, if you look at the cul-de-sac, we kept that road within what we call the white area, or the relatively not so topographically challenged areas. And then we have two lots, lots 18 and 19, we would propose as a dual driveway cut that would come out on North Church Street across one of the existing driveways, part of these houses here. Two stormwater areas, we've got stormwater areas designated in the northerly corner along North Church Street, and then in the, in the middle here as well. Now, this one has 19 lots, it has one access off of North Church Street. This will require a waiver for cul-de-sac line from the planning board. We, again, adequate site distance for this location. To the north is fine, look at this line. Looking south, we'd still have that same off-site requirement, off-site improvement with stump and grating and brushing. This location, again, where the two proposed driveways would be on North Church Street, there is adequate site distance.
Is it any shared, shared driveways there?
Well, just, we'd have one driveway cut, and then they could separate.
Yeah, maybe share driving.
Between 18 and 19, the proposed lots right here.
Right.
Somewhere, I mean, again, they wanna move it a little bit around, but instead of having two cuts, you know, three, two cuts.
It's amazing that you have less road in alternative number three, but that you have less lots.
Less lots. There is.
Well, one of the things that we also looked at, you know, on this one, when you, when the road, you know, when the road, when the, when the road comes, this road comes down farther, you know, you get some more road frontage in here, this, well, lot number 10, which is a very, very large lot in this layout, you know, is actually two lots, including this, trying to minimize the length of the cul-de-sac, reduce the road frontage that we could access. Because that was in the code, you have to have a, you know, road frontage of 19 feet in the lot, with 120 on your setup.
For the certain.
Yeah, so, let me get off there. And that's a tough spot anyway, you know, we wouldn't want that.
Art? Has Mike Dunleavy looked at this?
No. We didn't meet him out there and looked at, I mean, we just looked, we didn't show him any plans, we just walked the site, looked at the utilities, looked at the sewer and the water, and however it works out there currently, but he has not reviewed the alternatives.
What's, what's breaking, what is that? I'm trying to get oriented to where this, what's there? I'm telling you where that property ends, yeah. What is that?
What's the name on the corner of East State?
Those are lots, right? It's not the road, it's lots.
Who's this?
Oh.
Right here.
Bobby Hundy.
Yeah.
That's Chuck Engley's property, isn't it?
No, Chuck Engley's is right here, that's him right here with the.
I'm pointing to, this is where Engley is.
That's the piece.
Yeah, what piece is that?
That's the piece that has been in and out of the board probably for two decades. The piece is below, I call it the piece below Roger's house, it's the Italian bank owned, the.
The Italian bank?
Or a French bank, Italian bank, French, yeah, I think.
Oh, I know, I remember that.
Now, that owned Dubai, yeah, that actually front, you know where that front, that, that front's on Fletcher Street?
Fletcher?
You know where the two houses are built?
The new one.
Those are in the town.
Yeah.
And then where Nancy.
Nancy DePalmas.
Yeah, Nancy DePalmas, that piece goes all the way back to.
To her backyard?
Back to her backyard.
But there is frontage on Fletcher.
On Fletcher, and he owns the piece, also he owns, the current owner owns the piece on, in the town that gives him road frontage on.
Old Minnetec Trail.
Old Minnetec Trail.
So, it's a private owner now?
Yes.
On Old Minnetec Trail.
Close to the birth.
So, where Jonas is?
Yeah, right, yeah, like before, if you're, if you, like, it's before Jonas.
Between Jonas and.
And so much, yeah, okay.
Yes, between Jonas' house and.
There's a, there's a right away there.
Yeah, you know, like the resalied, the huge house was.
Yeah.
So, from her edge of her.
Property.
To Jonas, is that both space in there, or that's, that's the piece that he owns also?
Okay.
And then the piece between Nancy's house and the new house.
So, conceivably, you could enter there if it were, the terrain were.
No, no way. Yeah, no, you can't. I mean, short of a billy goat, you.
Only billy goats.
Only, sherpas, billy goats, and repels.
And elevators.
And hangars could get to there.
Maybe an elevator.
Elevators.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Get oriented to where these guidelines would be.
And that's right here, where it says Red Maple Holdings is the corporation that holds it. And that's that Morgan Merrill piece here, Engley's here.
Right.
And then Brian owns this piece also, which is in the town. And then this is Brian's residence, and this is where Roger lived over here.
Yeah. Do you remember the guy from the town?
Yes.
Because this is a lot.
That's Brian, yeah, it's a lot in town.
Let's not include it in this.
No, that's in town, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Oh, okay.
Precipitally.
Before you had, you had a road going through across the rest, and they had the first team, and.
So, this is alternative number three. Now, those three alternatives, we had looked in the field with Art and during the, during the, last Friday, we went, last Friday, we went and reviewed the other alternative. We have two of the, alternative number two. We have two of them, alternative number two and alternative number three. And during that discussion, John Queen from White and Pelly suggested alternative number four. Which is, and again, it's, this particular alternative is forty-one lots. It has one entrance off of North Church Street, which is at the, what we call the current area where it has this site distance, this has adequate site distance both to the north and to the south on North Church Street. This plan will also require a similar waiver as alternative number three, which is the length of cul-de-sac. And just to let you know, the, the length of cul-de-sac in the village devotion, I'm not sure where we came up with that number.
It's eight hundred?
Nothing, four hundred.
Four hundred?
No, four hundred. That's right, you're right. So it's like anything, but so it's...
And what are you requesting?
A waiver.
For?
Much your total...
Much more than that. I'm not sure what they are.
Well, there's two, there's two parts to the cul-de-sac. One is the length of the cul-de-sac and the other is the number of lots on the cul-de-sac. I think that in addition to the length of cul-de-sac restriction, the number of lots on the cul-de-sac can be twenty. So it doesn't seem to make sense that you can have twenty lots on a cul-de-sac when the cul-de-sac is only four hundred feet long. So we have, I think, a bit of a conflict in the code. I think, Augie, you know, you would know better too, a lot of the issues are emergency access.
Right.
You know, you don't want to be driving down a long road, you know, with emergency vehicles, but I would think that if you have twenty lots, most communities have that number as the maximum number of lots on the cul-de-sac and they let the cul-de-sac length kind of fit the zoning so that if you have lots with, let's say, a hundred and fifty foot of frontage, you can put those lots on a cul-de-sac and the length of the cul-de-sac would correspond to the number of lots. So...
Yeah, as long as, for emergency purposes, as long as the cul-de-sac is big enough turning.
Right.
The town has, I could think of one cul-de-sac in the town off of Gate School House Road that we had fire at a house at the end of the cul-de-sac, probably four years ago, maybe, something like that. Lower Lane?
Lower Lane, yeah.
It's cul-de-sac and it's quite long and, I mean, we got all kinds of emergency vehicles in here.
In and out.
Oh, yeah, in and out.
Right.
I mean, I was at the end, I was at the beginning of the cul-de-sac drafting and a quarter miles and kind of dropping the water in, but yet there was enough room next to me for more emergency vehicles to get down that cul-de-sac, so it all depends on the width of the road they were able to get.
Right.
So for emergency point here...
Well, you got to take into consideration school buses.
Yeah.
You know, emergency vehicles in snow.
Right.
In a cul-de-sac.
Just to be clear, when I was talking about the actual diameter, we're talking about the length of the road, that's the cul-de-sac as well?
Well, there's, there's, there's code in the diameter of the, of the bubble of the cul-de-sac itself, which we have to meet, which both of these probably we'd see, I bet. But it's the actual length from where it starts to where it ends. On the previous one, so on the previous one, you know, you would have gone four hundred feet and that would have been the extent of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
What we're asking is pretty on it, where our point is at, if you look at the twenty lots, you know, in this particular zone, our lot width is a hundred and twenty feet wide minimum, you know, and, and that's the minimum by bulk requirements, but we're also required to, when we create a lot, we have to show, and again, on the first alternative, the table's on there, but we have to evaluate each lot with regard to the percentage of slopes and the net, yeah, actually deduct certain slopes out of the, what was the average of the proposed lot, you get to a net that equals the minimum lot. So sometimes even you get a little, require you get a little wider.
But even, even in a flat world for four hundred feet and that frontage, you're going to get it both eight or nine lots, you're not going to get...
Well, really, yeah, you're...
Well, if you approach it the other way, if a hundred and twenty is the maximum of the minimum, excuse me, lot width and you're allowed twenty, that means if you have ten on each side, it would be ten times a hundred and twenty of twelve hundred feet would be the length of cul-de-sac you would need to get twenty lots. So in our zoning, I don't believe you can, you can develop a piece of property with more of the cul-de-sac, the zoning that we have selected. So it's...
So these are the stuff that they have on, other feet front.
Sorry.
Some of these lots look like they have...
I don't know the dimensions of these lots, what's the minimum frontage on these lots?
The minimum, well, on street frontage, the minimum, so like when you're in this cul-de-sac, like this dimension, has to be along the, like, curve line, on right-of-way line, has to be ninety feet. And then our minimum lot width is measured at the minimum front yard setback. So from the right-of-way line, back fifty feet or forty feet, what is our front yard? It's forty feet. That distance, you have to strike a cord and that's going to be a hundred and twenty.
Now, one of the reasons why we talked about this alternative is the, the location of the proposed intersection is at the place where there's the best site distance on the property, number one. Number two, I don't believe it requires any off-site improvements whatsoever. Also, I don't think it requires any onsite improvements. So Steve did mention this, on a lot of the other road intersections, it would be necessary for them to cut back the trees on the site. And when you're driving along North Church Street, there's some nice trees along the side of the road, particularly as you get down near the south end of it where all the grading would have to be done, both onsite and offsite. So I think we're able to save a bunch of trees along North Church Street that'll buck the, the closed houses from the houses across on the other side. So we were looking at it primarily from a point of view of traffic safety and where's the best point to have an intersection and minimize onsite grading and offsite to the town for something. So this, this intersection does it. There are other issues that we need to look at on all four plans, but this one, I think, is the best alternative in terms of traffic safety.
And there's no lots on North Church Street?
There's no lots on North Church Street at all, no. And the cul-de-sac is actually, if you want to take just, again, from a paramedic's point of view, you know, you're coming in and you go left or right, so you're not really driving along, along cul-de-sac like number three, you know, it almost cuts it in half by splitting it in two and going left or right.
What members, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just like, now, now we're getting to the, to the length question. Steve, I presented to you the alternative, but we actually take it a step further than Art and I just wanted to say hadn't had a chance, but look, because, I mean, I got this at five of five today and I want to share this at least with the board. And it was an evaluation of not the first alternative, but the second, third, and fourth alternative, what we wanted to do. Because another issue on this site, like every other building lot in that part of town or pretty much any part of town, is shit. I mean, we have bedrocks, and there's bedrock here, just as there's bedrock over there, there's bedrock, you know, everywhere. So one of the things is, is we wanted to make sure that, and when I kept saying that we tried to keep the roadways in the white, in the white spots, that means the white spots are less, the least challenging portions of the site. And then we also looked at trying to keep, you know, at least a decent white spot on each of the lots so we know that we could have, you know, a house location. We also think that the site has some great opportunities for some very magnificent access. So what we did is we take it a step further. Instead of just looking at it in the schedule, we actually did some profiles and the distance of grades of the road. And I would, if I could, I just wanted to lay this down.
What's the road is, set the high point of the property?
On North Wall?
No, on all, all, all the lengths, actually.
The spine road?
You mean the, the interior road?
The interior road.
Um, pretty much...
Yeah, you might say that, it kind of follows a bit of original...
The wet areas, right?
Right, right, no, no, it's up five there.
They all look like they're pretty much in the same five.
Yeah.
Is that the same for you, Steve?
Okay, this is, I just wanted, I don't know if you want to take a look at these little here.
Number two.
This is alternative, yes, this is alternative number two. This is the... That's this one, alternative number two. And what we did is, the next step is, is, you know, once you look at it in plan, you know, planometrically, you can get this to work, the road work, you can get the lot lots to work, you're really going to look vertically. And what we did is we, we profiled or took a cross section through the center line of the proposed road. But this is still in plan and all these little lines here show proposed grades, these are your contour lines. This is, here's North Church Street. Stop me if you're not, if you don't follow right. This is our, our southerly proposed entrance at the location at the high point, still requiring some off-site improvements. And then the other northerly entrance onto North Church Street, which has adequate site distance to go south and to North Church. When we come into this road, if you remember, one of the spots... I'm sorry, this is, this is alternative three. If you remember, this, here's North Church Street again.
Am I hearing right?
That was right, I skipped one third of it. Here we go. Here's the, the two entrances and the cul-de-sac. This road comes into this, enters in on this gray area here, that's an area that we know that's either fifteen percent or greater than fifteen percent. So that's why you see all these contour lines, because what's happening is that we're actually making a cut, cut into there.
I don't know if you can see this. I'm going to follow this, Art. It's very quiet.
So this is the road from here to here. Right, so what you have is, you're coming in here, there's a little bit of a cut, as you get into the site, you follow the grade up, there's a little bit of cut on the way up, you're back to grade here, and then as you go over, there's a high point here that's going to require a cut and then you spill in the back. But most of this work in here was isolated in this area right in here. Because one of the things is you have to make the intersection flat, relatively flat fifty percent. But now, this road coming in is the cul-de-sac. And what happens here is if you can see this line... And what happens is, is we have, there's a certain standard that we have to file when you have an intersection from a proposed road and it is given. So maxing that out, which is at three percent, and you can, and then your, your maximum grade on the road is ten percent, this is roughly at nine percent, which isn't anything there like North Church Street. At nine percent, you're looking at somewhere, say, within, here's where the road starts, going one, two, three hundred feet into that road.
Twenty feet.
What's that?
Goes up around twenty feet.
Yeah, well, you're going up ten, twenty, about twenty-five feet. You're looking at a twenty-five foot, right, twenty, twenty-five, well, somewhere between twenty, twenty-five foot cut in that section of the road, a rock cut.
In a short span.
In a short span. And what happens is, is you start to chase grade and you never catch it. So that's why when you see all these dark lines right here, you know, you're, you're actually grading to catch the grade.
By the time it hits that tee, it's on like sixty or seventy.
Right. So, but you have ten percent waiver.
Well, we had...
Ten percent more. Well, we're, right now, we're nine percent right here. We could go to ten percent and, you know, you, this, this, so this point, you know, maybe up here, but you're not, but you're not going to have...
So what this tells us is that doesn't, it's not economically viable to come around site in that location.
Okay. Is that the same location as alternative four?
Yeah.
That's the same location as alternative five.
Yeah. So, now, I just wanted, one of the things that, again, that we looked at is, and I don't know how it's going to work, let me... Just go back to two of them. We're coming in here, one of the things that we may look at is see if we can come in somewhere here and see what that does.
Or what that, what is that?
That's, well, this could be...
It's still two.
It's two, but I'm really looking to take that idea in a polite form.
What is this exercise telling you, the tree is the most viable alternative?
Well, what tells us right now is if you look at the profile, if you, if you look This alternative, the single cul-de-sac alternative is the most viable alternative. And again, when you, like, in plan, what I said is we kept, we kept this all within the white spot. If you look at the only area that is going to require some cutting and filling, for the most part, it's right there. Coming off the road, this is, we're coming in, the other we came in at three percent, would be much better to come in at two percent, you know, at least until you get to a point. This is at an eight percent slope, which is a really reasonable slope. Here's grade right here. This is the existing grade. Down like that. So, you know, you have a, you have a fill here, you have a little cut here, those are, and the nice thing is, is that, you know, if you have one of these, you want to have one of those right next door, so you can take that and do what we're going to do. So, and that's that isolated area that I said, right here, which we know, we're going to have to cross this little ridge no matter what in any of the alternative, which is fine. So then, what I would say, the bulk of any, you know, heavy lifting and building, road is, is located, is isolated in this area here. This is all pretty much with grade, this is all pretty much with grade, there's a small cut down in here. And that's, and that's the plan with the least amount of lots.
And that's the plan with, that's nineteen lots.
Okay. Is there any way to swing that, that cul-de-sac? I understand what you're saying about, you know, the grade here is, is lower, it's not as steep coming up North Church Street. But is there any way to swing this cul-de-sac around differently so you don't have lots eighteen and nineteen on North Church Street? I'm just, I'm just drawing... Yeah, but I mean, we looked at, we looked at, and again, the answer to that is possibly. You know... You know, we didn't, we didn't push the lots on the cul-de-sac, I mean, there was some concern with just the existing terrain. I mean, this area in here, I mean, usually, this is your buildable, pretty much your buildable area right here. You know, so... The other alternative, and I don't know, I mean, if that, just going back to your, to your idea, and I don't know, Mike, like to applaud, in other words, let's say we establish a number of lots, say twenty lots. The other alternative, and I don't know, I mean, if that, just going back to your, to your idea, and I don't know, Mike, like to apply, in other words, let's say we establish a number of lots, say 20 lots. Yeah, but two or three of those lots access on North Church Street. Could we run a, do a cluster plan? In other words, say, okay, here's your, here's your hazard bright plan?
I forget if the number code is a plus.
Well, I had to clustering plan, but I don't know if you can use that, because where you run it to, where you, if we could do, actually, if you can, if we can just do minimum lots, like, let's just say, keep it at 120 foot wide, lot lots. It would be fine, you could put a bunch of lots in there. But it's when you start to do the, the slope thing, you know, it moves so much. It pushes some of these lots, so from a, from a 20,000 or 30,000 square foot lot to a 60,000 or 70,000 square foot lot, to make it, to conform.
But what if you took your alternative one, which gives you, what, 22 lots?
Right.
And that's buildable?
Buildable, hazard brush, approval, that's your yield.
I don't think that is approval.
Well, I'm saying go to, go to, go to the cul-de-sac.
Well, we have to come up with a plan that's approval.
Right. That's approval.
Which one's that?
That's the little cul-de-sac. That's on the, that's on the, this, this road right here.
And that is 19 lots, and then that becomes your yield.
That's 21.
Well, I mean, on this...
Has two on North Church Street.
But it's two on North Church Street. So I'm saying if we could somehow cluster those onto the...
To keep the count the same, but find another way to configure it.
Right.
I'll have to look at the provision.
That's usually one clustering allowed.
It's 21.
Well, there's, there's two, yeah, 19 on this on North Church.
Oh, okay.
On alter, oh, number three is 19 total lots, with two on...
Two of the 19 on...
On North Church. On North Church.
So we can develop a yield plan. I mean, if we extended this, you know, another couple hundred, I would get enough road frontage to cut 10 in half. And so you've got 20 lots. Two on the, on the... And stay, still stay at or below, you can point it, you can permit it under the cul-de-sac. So the only way to redevelop the floor is to land.
One question. On these cuts that you're, you're taking.
Okay.
Some are large. What did you say? How deep are the cuts?
Oh, well, I mean...
On this, on this, look right at number three.
At this ring here.
On its contact. How will driveways be affected with those lots of load?
Well, if you look at, well, here's the, here's the cuts. There's a, there's about a four-foot cut at station 100. So if you come in 100 feet right in here, this is, and if you look, see these darker lines, those are proposed grades, so that's really not bad. There's a little, there's a 2, 4, and then right at this spot is the worst spot, there's 2, 4, 6 contours right there. But you can come in from, you know, your driveway, you can come right in here, you're right almost at grade. So this cut that you see right here starts before 100 and ends just at 200. So 200 is here, so you're actually right at the end of that, and you're second lot. You're right, you're right back to grade. The rest of this is all on grade until you get to this spot right here. Where there's about a seven-foot fill, and then right here, you probably got about a seven or eight-foot cut, and then you're right at grade right here. There's a little bit of a knoll, this, this is like a ridge right here.
Right on that turn.
So you're looking to keep out right there. I'm sorry, Steve. So I'm just saying, so in terms of access, you have, you have pretty decent access along this, along this geometry.
So when you cut this, this road, you're looking to keep it on grade from North Church Street all the way to the cul-de-sac?
Well, it just, it happens that that's how it works, you know, this is...
Well, you have to take the middle part out. I mean, if you start at North Church Street, you're talking back to there, it's about the same, but it goes higher.
Right where you're finished, that's the high point of the site.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So it's up to...
So that, that's got to be cut.
Yeah. Well, actually, the cut, we, we stay right on that grade, Ogie.
On the grade, the grade starts at like 540.
Yeah, that, that little spot is right here, so there's a little bit of a cut right there, but for the most part...
It goes up 50 feet.
We're right here. See this red line?
Goes up 50, from what I'm seeing, it goes up, from North Church Street to that spot, it goes up about 50 feet.
Yeah, right here to here. Yeah, 40 feet, well, from the top here, right here's 590, and here's 550.
Okay, 40 feet. So I'm looking at 540 in North Church Street. Is that 540? Anyway, okay, 40 feet. So, so the lot is going to be 40 feet above the street grade?
Yes. When you get back in. North Church Street.
Oh, yeah, the whole set was up.
I'm saying lots, I don't know, I can't see if they're, well, 5, 4, these lots right in here, where the grade is 590. Those lots are going to be 40 feet above the street grade. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, here's like, if you look at lot five...
Yeah. That's the question I asked before.
About North Church Street, yeah.
The road is going to follow the grade. Yeah, see this, see this question right here?
The question I asked before was, is the road going to keep the same grade from North Church Street?
No, no, no.
Do you have the...
Something to go up?
Okay, say yes.
No, I said it stays on the existing grade.
Oh, okay.
As, as the grade goes up, the road, go back, follow the grade.
So the road, so the road is going to go 40 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And 8%, if you take 8% over 500 feet, that's, that's 40 feet. And so if this is 500...
Okay.
So that's how you get it. So, Ogie, let me just...
Do I clear?
So here's existing...
I misunderstood the answer to my first question, Steve.
Oh, okay.
All right.
So this is the one that topographically works the best.
Seeing it filled?
So this, right, so, so what you have is, and then, when you say looks, looks are deceiving, because this is a, a, what's called an exaggerated vertical scale. So this... There's a, a public in front of it as well, and, you know, we've got neighbors fairly close on two sides, if not three. So, you know, that might have some impact on, on, you know, your, your leaning as well. So, I know we usually, it might get into the, the public hearing, and it's, and I was at the seeker, but a public comment might be helpful also, so that you can get that piece of the puzzle in as well. You certainly don't want to spend a lot of time on a plan, and it's, it's a difficult plan for the neighbors to accept. Although, with this property, there aren't, you're starting to get narrowed down to the alternatives that work. You don't have a lot of different options. We're starting to see, as we look at these alternatives, for one reason or another, we're getting directed by the site itself into what's the best way to develop the property.
And I think, very good, the neighbors will have different opinions as to which alternative they like.
Right.
Each of them affects that different...
We, we have four alternatives in front of us right now. I mean, we should be selecting at least two, unless you want to present all four. Some of these aren't practical.
Right. I don't think, I don't think the first one that was submitted makes sense to pursue.
Unfortunately, that one doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's probably...
It's a great idea, but it is...
Because there's really nothing we could do to mitigate that vertical curve going down to like that one. I mean, that's unfortunate.
Now, the issues that you showed on number four, so the access is the same as two.
Right.
So your number two doesn't work either. If number four doesn't work, number two doesn't work.
Exactly.
But as you mentioned, if we're going to have two of the lots coming off there, they're going to be doing some grading in, not as much, the cost is going to be off.
Yeah, I mean, for a driveway, you know, we don't have the same, same geometry that you do, that you held to in a public road. So you could go up to a higher, you know, to a greater, greater slope. I mean, you drive around some of those slopes, I mean, 14% driveway.
What is that cost?
10%, I think, but I think with shorter stretches of 12, if I remember correctly. But you really don't want to exceed 10, if you don't know. My own feeling is, I think we should spend a little bit more time analyzing this, number three.
Number three, see how it works.
And I agree, and I, I think there's two things, I think, Mike, you know, maybe you and I can take a look at that clustering idea. Because honestly, I think that if that's something we could get to work, you know, if, we can take that and apply it to Art's other concern about the public component. Because, you know, there's no way around it. We are going to have to do some stormwater facilities here, and we're going to have to do some stormwater facilities here. Those are the two low spots, that's the way it works. But if we can do something here, you know, we, you know, it would be great for us, you know, we would like to see us be able to maintain that tree-lined road up at buffer along North Church Street as well. I think it, you know, it brings value to this, and it's also made good neighborhood, because, you know, the principles of this endeavor are, local people are defending it for a long, 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 long time, and want to make sure that this gets done right. So I think if we can focus the development in what you referred to the, the white spot, you know, I think we'll ultimately end up with a, with a better product.
Okay, so you're going to look into number three.
That seems after seeing the profile tonight. Well, I mean, why don't we, I'll, I'll shift them over to you to take a look at it.
So I, I don't want to put you on your... What's, what's the clustering going to afford you?
What's that? If he can make the layout. Take these lots off of here, and squeeze these out of the side, and put them all around here.
Okay.
Take North Church.
Yes.
Like I had.
And then a land, there's certain situations with the excess land, right, we have, it's in our code.
Yeah, that's what Mike was making a look at. Yeah, I'll take a look at the clustering provisions, you go back there.
And it's always something to keep in the back of your mind.
Let me write this down, Ogie.
I hear you. Hold on.
I think also, if you're all in agreement on that, that moving, you know, that's a place to sidewalk.
He said it.
With, 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 yeah. On number three.
I think you should quote with...
That makes sense.
That's a place to sidewalk. Actually, sidewalk, actually sidewalk should be on the other side of North Church Street, and connect the sidewalk that ends at, uh, some, some used school.
Like you...
By, um, the Cola.
No, but, yeah, not on that, no, it's the real street.
Where's the terrace? Should you quote him?
You should not.
That's...
You want a sidewalk.
But if I quote, I mean, I could use a chat. But yeah, it's not the sidewalks.
All right, Stephen, you're all set.
Down on North Street.
That's Stephen, you're all set.
That's Jim Walker.
Yes, Ogie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Quite well. Jim, you want this? Mr. Quattrini, 90 Main Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Been a while since I've been here.
And we miss you. You know, something, your family presence is here.
Quite a job.
Yeah.
I'm not going to give you any alternatives, I have a very straightforward plan.
It's not either or?
It's not either or.
So we, so we might give you some alternatives.
We might. I hope not.
I hope not too.
About four years ago, before you, with this plan, uh, based on the, the properties, we had a final date of 2010, it said last. Looking to request, I mean, say, you know, that same exact approval, only that it lasts, it goes to decom, and she...
I understand that.
Basically, just looking for you.
There's no change at all? No change whatsoever?
The elements in front of you is the same plan that was here in 2008. There's no plan, there's no change whatsoever. Well, the, if it has last, yeah. If you, if you have the approval in front of you, that would be of the...
Okay, so, refresh our memories, what were you wanting to do?
One of you... Look at the plans, this is what it looked like today, when you were all there. This is what it looked like in 1971.
A part two.
And this is the plan for the facade, you're looking at the facade, to return to the tiny arches of the... There's no change in any windows, you know, retained tower, restored the tower, there's no change in the footprint. Only, we need, uh, major construction was going on, it was moved, two of the, wooden, uh, structures that's on either side of the tower. There to be reinforced, the ground, the block type up in break. If there was any ritual, that's not, that's not... It is exactly the same 10% like in 2008. Last two-year, uh...
Yeah, the two-year approval period.
Two-year approval period.
Well, Lewis, or Michael, do we have any...
This is like what you would done on the first item on the agenda two months ago, you reapproved it. There were only four conditions of the resolution on this one, and it was, started with one year, we missed that. Anticipated completion date had been March 1st, 2010, that will need to be extended, and beyond that, it was just a performance standards affidavit.
What were the conditions, Michael?
The first was, the, has to start in a year, that's the standard condition. The anticipated completion date was March 1st, 2010. The third was, there was also an ARB approval for this, so that the construction had to be consistent with the architectural design district plans, and it had to file a performance standards affidavit, because it's in the commercial zones. So all they had to do was declare a new anticipated completion date, and you can reapprove it.
Any comments, board members?
So what's your new date?
Well, if the economy continues, I would ask for another three years. I don't know where we're going with this, we're just looking for a restatement of this. I'm going to get started with some of the interior demolition, just to see what the structure is all, do some probing, hopefully will attract some attention to it.
April 24th, 2015.
15. Any other comments, board members? Is there a motion?
So...
Motion to, uh, extend the completion, oh, it's...
Reapprove it with a new anticipated completion date.
Any other conditions that were in the previous approval?
I'll second that motion.
We have second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Quick check. See anyone here with a quick check? Have they contacted you, Mike, for any reasons, quick check?
No, I don't know why it's on the agenda. I did talk to Dennis Flutie yesterday, he was following up on the lead to, and to do the developer's agreement for the build cord for sidewalk contribution. I talked to Dave Donovan about that this morning, and he said, so they're supposed to be for the real... But there's nothing really here.
Okay. Do you need this, uh, uh, stormwater management?
We have the, yeah, we have, we have that. We're in the process of reviewing that, so they, they have some things to do with outside agencies, D and C particularly, they, they did get approval from the DOP. So I, I think they're just, you know, tightening up some loose ends, and that's, that's it. So I don't know why they're, because we gave the site plan a few less.
Okay. And they've contacted David Donovan?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments on that, board members, on quick check? Okay, moving forward, Pisa can validate it, 4/3/2012, Malls of Goshen, and we're looking for a six-month extension, we want Mary pool. Art, do you have any issues?
Well, um...
Which one's this, man? This one from John Street?
Yes, the horseshoe shaped one, right. Yeah, we do have some engineering questions that we put out...
Yeah, we do have some engineering questions that we put out to the applicant, and I've met with their attorney, Jim Sweeney, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, but I'd like to hear back from them soon. So anyway, if you're comfortable with a six-month extension, but I'd like to try to get a conversation going, so we can get the plans to a point where they're approvalable. Right now, in my mind, there are some issues with the road design that is not compliant with our road specifications. I think it's correctable, but I'd like to see the applicant submit a revised drawing. So if you're considering an application extension, or approval extension, rather, I'd like to do with the provisor that they submit something to us within the next month or two, so that we can, I don't think they're coming as soon as, getting another extension, in other words, on the old plan.
And you've been in contact with them?
We've talked to their attorney and their engineer both, yes.
When's the current approval run out?
I think you said, uh, May, the next month.
And maybe before our meeting?
May twelve, before our next meeting.
Oh, the May, May of two thousand and twelve, I don't know the date, I imagine it's at, Michael, I don't, I don't know.
Usually, well, if they ran from the original approval, usually when we do the extensions, we try to put her onto a night of a planning board meeting, but I can't tell you whether that's the original or not.
So, if it is the night of the planning board meeting, the current approval runs out that night?
Yeah, I don't have a.
No, thanks.
If they're ready to guess.
If that's the case, it would run out that night.
So how would you work it that?
Yeah, yeah.
You're going to get them to respond.
Well, you can.
Don't give them six months.
Yeah, just say, give them three months, and then have them come back in three months, and, you know, that.
And our alternative is not to give them an extension at all until they can.
Why?
But if they don't, their approval will expire, I would imagine, right?
If it's, if it's before our meeting.
Because they would have to.
Yeah, but, you know, one of their people could be missing on vacation, I mean, you put their back against the wall if you.
So we give a three-month extension, we still haven't signed plans yet.
Right. Oh, no, they're only. They're preliminary, they have a preliminary approval.
So a three-month extension, sounds good, board members?
Your meeting is July twenty-fourth.
July, till July twenty-fifth, Jim. Okay? Guess we have a rainy day. Well, now it's going to run out if we don't approve.
It might happen if it runs out.
I gotta start over.
If we give them an extension, they still, this is a preliminary approval, they still have to comply with.
They got a lot of things they get to do.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Want to give them two months?
No, no, there was some discussion a couple of months ago about this, and.
We wrote a letter.
Okay.
And, and met with their engineer, and then their attorney came in following that, and said, we got plenty of time to fix this, and we'll get to it. So I said, okay, but, you know, I'd like to, as I said, get the preliminary plan, so that we can reapprove the plan that's compliant with.
Well, we still have that, that, they're still hanging out there, because what they have now doesn't work. We know it doesn't work. Are you, are you concerned? They can't forward, okay.
They don't have approval. It's preliminary, it's not even conditional, correct?
Right, okay, all right, I feel better now.
If you feel that better, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, we extend it for two thousand and three months, or six?
Three months.
July twenty-fifth.
July twenty-fifth.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have a letter from Peter's second, or, uh, Peter Body.
I mean, July twenty-fourth, right?
Heritage Estates.
July, yeah, okay.
Mike, you had correspondence with.
I don't have either of those letters, so I don't know anything about it.
Well, it indicates that I would like to have an opportunity to speak with the board in connection with the sidewalks there, showing up, representing, I was looking for.
Representing Heritage is James Dillon.
James, I'm sorry, James.
Substituting for Peter Body, wrote the letter, and went on vacation. I think about three or four months ago, we were here, I was here with Peter, and we were talking about Heritage Estates, and we asked, there was two things we asked for back then. We wanted to either change the curbing to either Belgium lot to concrete, and then we asked about not putting any sidewalks. The board, at that meeting, said that they were in favor of changing the curbing, and that we should leave Mike Poselis and find out the type of curbing that he wants to use. And I met with Mike Poselis, and he definitely said concrete curbing, he didn't even hesitate, he didn't want to cause any more curbing. We're in agreement with that. I just, I'll tell you where that went, and is that consensus, or?
Yep, what you said.
The sidewalks were still an issue, and the board was studying that at that point. And he said he was going to talk about sidewalk districts, and we would come back at a later date. And I think that's why Peter, I'm sure that's why Peter wanted to come to you, we're getting very close and eager to know whether the sidewalks are going to go in, because we're going to complete the construction.
Did you clear any?
We're working on, yes, we've opted to build the subdivision before the town, and go over improvements.
They're bonded, everything else?
You can build or bond.
Build or bond, they're building. So, if you recall, this is a project of ours prior to our current position here in the village, so another engineer is doing the inspections on that, so we don't have any involvement in that.
Who's the engineer?
Uh, Jared McDonald, doing the inspections. So they opted to start the construction, they posted monies to pay for the inspection fees, and that's, that's being done now.
And your concern is sidewalks?
Yes.
Very sensible question.
The concern is that the sidewalks go through, I guess it's a stone or something, and there's no, no curbing or sidewalks that they're going to go through.
Now, to give you a counterpoint, they're not doing sidewalks this month. I don't think it'd be doing sidewalks next month.
I was saying, two months.
Yeah, so, if you still want to consider it, but I think you need to, maybe you want to take a look at the site and see where it is in relationship to the Lakers, because there are no sidewalks in the Lakers, and then it comes out onto South Street.
South Street, correct, because of fine grade road.
Yeah, so, I think it would be helpful to look at it, you know, in terms of where these sidewalks are going to be, and where they're going to go, and then make a decision. But they, I think you have maybe a month to think about this.
In the meantime, you may want to put together a report of the cost of putting the sidewalks in, because if the village board is going to do with your project what it's considering doing with the others, it's going to take a contribution of that amount to put into a fund, rather than build sidewalks in your subdivision.
Right, okay, I don't know, I can do that.
I think that's a good idea, yeah, and I think we should schedule a meeting with the village board about the sidewalks.
It's, I've already spoken to the mayor.
Oh, okay.
But it won't hurt to send a letter.
I think, I think with the.
Oh, okay.
Developers agreement?
Yes, that's where the resolution's set in the other two cases.
The developers' agreement, I think, gives the village, I should talk to you now.
Go ahead.
I think you get the possibility to take the money without figuring out where they're going to spend it, so you can take the money, hold it, and then decide later on.
Always in favor of taking the money.
Right, so, but the issue that they need to know is, do you want the money, or do you want the sidewalks?
Right.
Right, that's the issue.
And how do we determine the money?
We do a construction cost estimate on what the sidewalks would cost, and that came out of money that they would give to the village.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm thoroughly familiar with the site.
Okay, okay, so, I don't know, if you're ready to vote tonight, you can vote tonight, I'm just saying if you're not ready.
Do you want to look at it, or do you want?
I've looked at it.
You have?
Yeah, but.
Have you looked at it?
I have, I'm not a hundred percent, but, do you have something set up, or what does the mayor think?
As far as the money?
No, nothing is set up, as far as that's concerned.
No, but as far as meeting, or?
I asked, if we could have a meeting with the village board, who's going to discuss it with them, and that was about four weeks ago.
And are you hearing anything from the village attorney about this, Michael?
I talked with him today, and he talked with Dennis about putting together the quick check one, I reminded him at the same time that, what's the other one called, Old York, Old York had a similar condition, and, you know, both of those developers are interested in finalizing those developers' agreements.
And then now High Point is going to have the issue as well?
Yep, they're going to want to do that.
I can just smell it in the air, so, what should we do? Should we schedule a meeting, or?
Well, scheduling a meeting, it's our choice whether we have the sidewalks there or not. So I think that scheduling a meeting with the village board, or our decision doesn't work, because when you make that decision.
What you do, what you did in the other two is, you said that they didn't have to build them provided that they reached satisfactory agreement with the village board on the contribution. Otherwise, if they don't reach that agreement, they still have to build them, both quick check and the other. We just all assume that they will.
So, meaning with the village would be just like a good housekeeping, so, kind of?
Basically, basically. Well, our concern was that the funding would go into, not into a general fund, it would go into on sidewalks itself, and that's what I discussed with the mayor. So, tonight, do you want, you want to wait a month, or do you want to look at it again, or do you want to vote on it tonight?
I could vote on it tonight, that's my feeling, but.
And would you give us a clue about how you're going to vote?
We'll take, take monies and work sidewalks, for this particular project, yeah. It's not a project by project.
And your reasoning is?
Because sidewalks don't work.
Going to another subject?
It's a continuation, well, it's a continuation of Gray Road, isn't it?
Yeah, Monty Gray, yeah, to Roble Lane.
Yeah, I'm sorry, South Ray, Roble Lane Drive, okay, and Roble Lane Drive, right now, does not have sidewalks at all, so it's, coined my phrase again.
That actually creates sidewalks there, if it was something.
If it was necessary, I'm talking about the one, the new, new one here, you know.
Well, we just reviewed.
Sidewalks on North Church Street would be right there, but that's, you know, that's different, because it's going right into the village proper.
Cut that away.
The only concern I have is that it's the cost of what it costs us to build sidewalks, the contribution.
What is your concern with that?
Well, I, I'm not.
What's the benefit, is what Jim's saying?
Well, I mean, if, I'm sure it's fair, but what if it comes off twice?
I think I would do that. I think you follow a form, don't you?
Well, the, I think what Jim is getting at is, is we have one price for sidewalks, if the village had to build them, and there's another price for sidewalks, if contractors built them, because the village price is higher than the contractor's price. I'm sure we'll wind up someplace in the middle.
I think there's some fair estimates just to do it, I can charge you, you know, contractors. Sometimes the bonds tend to be a little bit.
The bonds assume.
If the village, if the village has to do the work, they have to do it at prevailing rates, which is very different.
It could be frightened.
And it's not going out to big.
Right. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but my, my limited memory serves me correct, when we met with the village, they, most of the village board at that time seemed in favor of the concept, but we, we didn't have a formula. I think we talked about formula of how to do this, and, you know, to get sidewalks done less expensive.
Well, it's also project-specific, in the sense that where you put them might be a different cost than just the amount of linear feet of concrete, but I think the engineers can do those things.
Should be some kind of a figure out some more.
But if you, if you make it subject to.
With the sidewalks.
That's fine.
That's, that's how the other ones.
Okay.
So, board members, you want to vote on this this evening, or do you want to wait a month?